Eileen, can you please open the meeting?
Howell Township Zoning Board of Adjustment, Monday, February 12, 2024. I hereby declare this meeting of the Howell Township Zoning Board to be open. Adequate notice having been given pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meeting Act in the following manner. First, on December 11, 2023, a copy of said notice was mailed to the Asbury Park Trust and the Star Ledger. Second, on December 11, 2023, a copy of said notice was hand-delivered to the clerk of the township of Howell. Third, on December 11, 2023, said notice was posted in the office of the zoning board and on the bulletin board in the Howell Township Municipal Building, 4567 Route 9, Howell Township, New Jersey. In accordance with the Fire Prevention Code and for your safety, please be advised that this facility is designed with two emergency exits at the front and the rear of the meeting room. Furthermore, smoking is not permitted in the municipal building. Please take note that this meeting is being videotaped for possible future broadcasts on Howell Township TV 77. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues of what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and the decorum appropriate to judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. May we please have a roll call?
Mr. Barillo.
Here.
Mr. Cantor.
Here.
Mr. Hughes.
Here.
Mr. Mertens.
Here.
Mr. Roscoe.
Here.
Mr. Ryan.
Here.
Ms. Scottson.
Here.
And Mr. Sayah.
Here.
Mr. Stanton is absent, I guess. You have a quorum.
Thank you. Will everyone please join me in pledge allegiance?
Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Andy, can we have our swearing-in of the professionals, please?
Good.
I do. Jennifer Beam.
Thank you. Okay, item five on the agenda, approval of minutes. Regular meeting, January 22, 2024. Eligible voters: Barillo, Cantor, Hughes, Mertens, Roscoe, Ryan, Scottson, and Sayah. Motion, please.
Motion. Second.
We got a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Minutes approved.
Thank you. Eileen, are there any vouchers?
No vouchers.
Do we have any correspondence?
I have one thing for correspondence. Case number BA 18-17A, application of John Blewett has requested to be carried to May 20, 2024. With no further notice, an extension of time has been granted to the board to May 20, 2024.
So, the extension of time marries up with the meeting date?
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right, so anyone that's here for case number BA 18-17A for John Blewett, this is a use variance, bulk variance, and minor subdivision. This application is being carried to May 20, 2024 with the extension of time to May 20, 2024.
Yes, correct.
Thank you. Okay. No resolutions?
No resolutions.
All right, and then applications before the board. This is case number BA 23-23, NVR Inc., Ryan Holmes.
Mr. Chair, shouldn't we carry the church application before we start on the agenda?
If you would like to do that, I can. Okay. Case number BA 21-19, Restoration Family Worship. There'll be no testimony on this application. This application will be rescheduled to May 13, 2024 with further notice.
With no further notice.
With no further notice, thank you. Okay, back to BA 23-23. NVR Inc., Ryan Holmes. Type "bulk variance for permanent installation of two signs." Description: Application of NVR Inc., Ryan Holmes as applicant seeking bulk variance approval to install two new entrance signs to the single-family residential portion of the previously approved major subdivision approved by the planning board. The installation requires site signage variances for the front and rear setbacks, as well as the type of signage proposed. The signs are stated to be seven feet tall by eight feet, four inches wide, with text reading "Reserve at Howell," on premises known as Block 184, Lot 7.01 and 7.22, Yellowbrook Road and Adelphia Farmingdale Road. Expiration date, April 25, 2024. Sir.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Robert McGowan. I'm here representing NVR Inc., which is trading as Ryan Holmes and which are the builders of the development that we just described, Reserve at Howell. What we are seeking is approval or variance to grant the approval to put up two entrance signs, one at each of the entrance areas. It's a loop road, and we want to mark and make the development a little more distinguished and a little more attractive. You can see the sign on the board. It's designed not to block any views or anything, but still be attractive and informative. With me tonight, I have both our engineer and an engineer and a planner who will describe both the location of the sign and the variances that we're requiring, and then also explain the justification for it and why it should hopefully be approved and why it is additive to this community without any negative impacts.
Okay.
So if I may, I'll call my first witness. Michael Wazeloski is an engineer, a professional engineer, and he is with, um, sorry. He's with Shorepoint Engineering.
We'll have him put his credentials on the record, sir.
We definitely will.
Can you guys see that?
We have a copy.
Then we'll bring it closer, right?
They have, Bob, they have.
They have, they're saying, Mike wants to point to it so that they can see what you're pointing at. Okay. Mike, why don't you introduce yourself and give your credentials?
Before I get swear, I mean, Bob.
Okay, please, thanks.
Be sure to testify if it will be the truth, don't shoot, nothing but the truth to help you out.
I do.
Take your name to the record and spell your last.
Name is Michael Wazeloski. That's W-E-S-E-L-O-S-K-I. I am a principal engineer with Shorepoint Engineering, licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey. My license is current and in good standing. Provide a testimony in front of boards throughout the state. I don't believe in front of this board, but in front of your planning board.
Where did you go to school, sir?
The College of New Jersey.
Okay. We'll accept your credentials.
Thank you. All right, the exhibit you have before you, I believe, has been designated A7 in the list. As we had discussed, subject properties, Lot 7.01, 7.22. They each contain frontage on Yellowbrook Road to the west, as well as Charleston Street, which is designed as a through-loop road for this portion of the subject development. And then further south, outside of the view of this plan, you have Adelphia Farmingdale Road or County Route 524. As I'm sure many of you know, this product has been well under construction for some time now. And as we heard, we're seeking bulk variances for the installation of two permanent site identification signs. Those variances include to place the sign within the 30-foot required buffer. The variance against for two permanent signs, where only temporary signs are permitted for this type of a development. And finally, variances for 15-foot setbacks to each frontage, whereas otherwise, in this case, 20-foot would be required. Bit of background in the time.
Actually, there's a perimeter buffer of 30 feet. So while 20 feet is what's in the temporary sign, you're not allowed to put anything within the buffer.
That's correct.
And it's a reduced buffer to begin with.
Correct.
So, I don't mean to interrupt, Mr. Chair, but if we could just get to it, is there a reason why you cannot comply with the buffer? Because you're already given the advantage of a 20-foot reduction in the perimeter buffer as it is per year zoning, because this was an affordable housing project? And this is not the affordable housing piece of the project? I just want the board to be aware of that. This is a single-family piece. Is there a reason why you can't comply with the 30 feet? I mean, we require every application to comply with our buffer.
Understood. It's our feeling that the purpose of the sign would be better suited. Complying with the 30-foot setback would place them in such proximity to their homes that they might almost appear as a homeowner amenity, as opposed to an HOA-sponsored purpose to the site to direct patrons.
I would suggest to the board, guys, I know you haven't been before this board before, but you have been in Howell before, and you are well aware that the buffers are sacrosanct in Howell. We don't grant relief from the buffer for anything. We don't even grant relief when the residential use is a cross Route 9, which is a divided highway with 100-foot right-of-way. So, I don't have a problem with the number of signs or the fact that they want to put signage. To me, the fact that they want to put two versus the none allowed, that's one thing. I don't have a problem with the size or the aesthetic. But I do have a problem with them putting it in our buffer, which we've already reduced for this specific zoning, which I just want to be very clear, not that this Ryan Holmes problem, but they're only in our housing plan because they sued us. So, let's just be very clear about that. So, they've already gotten 30 feet versus 50 feet, and now they want us to put something in that buffer, which we don't allow drainage, we don't allow grading, we don't allow anything. So, I'm not supportive of that. You guys can decide how you want to act on that, but I don't, this is a residential development. Anyone who's going to put this into their GPS is not going to need this. And the sign's not big enough to, it's not like it's Four Seasons on Route 33. So, it should honor our buffer.
So, and Mr. Chair, just to add to that, too. So, the township does have site triangle restrictions on intersections. Yellowbrook Road is the collector road per our master plan 1994. Charleston Street would be a local road. The site triangles are measured from the property line, so along Yellowbrook Road, you'd have a 65-foot leg of the site triangle. On Charleston Street, you'd have a 35-feet. So that, you know, 15 by 15 that they're showing would certainly be within that required site triangle. So to go along with Jen's comment, complying with the buffer would also help push it out of site triangle and any concerns with site distances at the intersection.
Well, that's certainly a safety concern, yes.
Mr. Collins, if I may, I would offer that the previously approved site plan prepared by Dynamic showed site triangles that would not be in conflict with these signage locations.
When did this get approved?
I believe the final resolution was in 2016.
So the road classifications have changed since then. So your site triangles, as you stand here today, are not what they were previously.
And are those shown on your plan?
They're not on this plan. The site triangles that were more prominent here would have, I thought, as an element conceived here. You're coming out of the development, and you're taking your, say, 14-foot offset from the hedge of pavement. Your triangle vertex is starting almost the same distance back from the proposed sign location, so the triangle leg would not interfere.
So, all I'll say for the board is, when that plan was approved by the planning board, there was no signage proposed, so their consideration of what the site triangle requirements might have had different context. In the terms of what we're looking at here with two proposed signage, I would say they should have to comply with what the site triangle requirements are in the code.
I mean, the board is aware that this is probably our heaviest industrial road in the entire township.
Yes.
So, you know, making sure safe ingress and egress for single-family homes on a road that is leading to our biggest industrial users is something that we're going to take seriously. So between that and the buffer, I can't support relief in that regard. The sign's going to need to be back behind the buffer, in my humble opinion.
If we were to be able to move it back 30 feet, which obviously lessens some of the benefit of the sign, because it's going to be harder to see now as you're driving down, but if we were to put it behind the buffer and outside, at that point, I believe we would definitely be outside of the site triangle, would that remove some of your concerns?
I would have no concern. If you're outside the buffer and you're outside the site triangle, as we said earlier, we don't take exception to them having signage here, and I don't take exception for the number of signage, the number of signs that you're proposing. The location is concerning. So I would say if it's out of the buffer and out of the site triangle, then I would have zero concern about the signage.
We would be willing to make that adjustment. Mike.
Charlie?
Yeah, so just to clarify for the board, so the variance is moving it out of the buffer and then complying with the site triangle. The town doesn't currently permit permanent signs. There's ordinance allowances for temporary signs when these are under construction. I think, John, correct me if I'm wrong, when the last unit is pretty much sold, then they have to take down the signs. So the 15-foot setback requirement we cited in our letter for the code is for temporary signs. So it's to allow permanent signs, and then, you know, where we don't have a standard, we try to find something applicable, temporary sign with the 15-foot setback, that's why we cited it in our letter, so.
But these aren't the permanent signs, intended to be, you know, an announcement that this is the development, the permanent sign.
Okay, I'll jump ahead and just briefly describe the sign that you see on the plan in front of you. First, we have a seven-foot-tall, 28-inch-square cross-section Mason Reifier. Attached to that would be a cedar crossarm painted black, and then suspended from that is the physical sign itself, reading "Reserve at Howell." That measures 48 inches in width, 30 inches in height.
I think we're good, just going to throw that out there.
Okay, okay.
I can close my testimony.
Unless the board has any other questions.
Jen?
Yes, sir.
So what about ground-mounted, like, sorry, downs?
We don't allow it in this particular zone. That's why they're here. They're asking us to allow it. I don't have a problem with us allowing it, and I take no exception. I know Mr. Vicenti's here to give us very detailed planning testimony, which I don't think we need, but what I'm saying is, is now that the sign has been moved and the concerns between the buffer and the site triangle have been alleviated, we take no exception. We think that the benefit of providing a site identification sign outweighs the detriment of not providing the sign. We think the aesthetics of what's being proposed is fantastic, and we would have no objection to the two signs being constructed and them having the signs in the first place.
John?
I have nothing, other than the setback includes whatever portion of that sign protrudes out the most, kind of measurement to the base of the sign, but as the sign in totality.
Okay. So where would you relocate the sign?
You're going to move it back to beyond the 30 feet, correct?
Correct.
So I would recommend, Mr. Chair, if the applicant would provide Charlie's office a plan that shows the relocated location, and if he's okay with it, then I would suggest that be a resolution compliance item if the board were to act in the affirmative, which I would recommend.
We accept Ms. Beam's testimony as the planning testimony in support of her application.
Yes, thank you. Charlie, in your estimation, how far back are those signs coming?
So to get out of the 30-foot buffer, it's going to be at least 15 more feet into the property, you know, on the Charleston leg of the intersection. And then it's going to be dependent, they're going to have to show the site triangle, 65 on Yellowbrook Road and 35 on Charleston, and just make sure that no portion of the sign encroaches into that site triangle. So, they show it on a plan, we'll review it as a condition of approval, and if it complies, we'll sign off on it.
Okay. Board members? There's not going to be any issue with visibility?
That's why we want them to move it back.
Okay, that's all, okay.
That's why we're having them move it back, yes.
Yeah, okay, then that's taken care of.
Mr. Chairman? Oh, come on, Mike.
Just to follow up on the visibility part, in moving that sign back, does the sign as it exists now, is that still visible from the street, or is that going to change as well in the process?
Being that it's further back from the street, it would be, in theory, less visible, but still visible, if that makes sense.
Didn't answer the question, though. Will you have to change that part of the sign, or is it going to be as-is regardless?
Let me answer that. There's no intent to redesign the sign. The sign that we presented is what we're looking to install.
Mr. Chairman? Are these two properties on the corners, are you building on somebody's properties?
They will be privately owned lots. Well, I mean, obviously, we own, Ryan Holmes is the owner of those lots at this point. They will be installed before they are sold, but when they are sold, it will be subject to that sign being there and being supported by the homeowners association.
Gotcha. So somebody owning that house is going to have a sign on their property?
Will have a sign, and they'll know that before they buy.
Okay, thank you.
Wow.
But imagine someone's visiting you, it'd be easy to find your house.
Yeah.
One of the houses with one of the two signs.
It's a signlet.
No.
Because that would be my thing, is from a visibility standpoint, while I'm kind of piggybacking on what he said, is that you're not going to have a full view of that sign without some sort of lighting, which if a house is going to be built on it, a homeowner may or may not be excited about having that.
Right, and that's one of the reasons that lighting hasn't been proposed.
I just want to say, for the record, we have hundreds of subdivisions throughout the town that have no signage.
Yep.
And people still manage to find their way. So, I don't necessarily think it's absolutely necessary at this location. If they want it, then there are things they're going to have to work through, but, you know, I live in a big subdivision, there's no signage to the entrance, people still manage to find their way to me, you know what I mean? So...
Don't they become a hazard, though?
It's going to be so far away from the road, it's not going to get hit with a plow, it's not going to be, it'll be fine. If they want it, it needs to be moved back to the 30 feet, that it will not be a hazard at that distance.
Yeah, I think you have to keep in mind, the right-of-way probably on Charleston's 50 feet, so, you know, the paved edge of the road is maybe 30-foot wide, so you've got another 10 feet on each side of the road before you even hit the property line, and then it's setback another, you know, 15 to 20 feet, you know, wherever it works to get out of the site triangle, so.
Okay. Not like a mailbox sign?
No.
No, no, okay, got it. Okay. All right. Mr. Barillo?
Yeah, I guess my curious question is, the long-term, what the applicant sees as the long-term benefit of having to have a sign. I mean, I see in the short term a temporary sign, because you're selling all the lots and the properties, but like Jen said, 10 years from now, I mean, even five years from now, people are just going to find your properties with a GPS.
Well, you know, if you go along Route 33, for instance, Toll Brothers is building there, if you go to some of the K-Hop homes and things, it makes it feel, seem more like a distinguished community by putting up the sign. It's basically a marketing thing, but it also is left there so that the residents who do buy in there feel a better sense of community and a better sense of identity. I think that's why they're doing it primarily.
Okay. And I see things like that as a little more of an eyesore, that's my opinion. I mean, and it's right on somebody's property, but understand that they know what they're getting. They know what they're getting. I mean...
Or at that time, the sign's going to come down.
Simplicity is better.
Well, I think the sign is under the jurisdiction of the HOA.
HOA, yes.
So it's not going to just come down, but the occupant is not there. So if they want to buy that particular lot, which is on Yellowbrook Road, which is probably not the most prestigious lot in this subdivision, they're going to buy the lot with the sign on it. And if they don't, they're not going to buy it.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Is that going to be a condition of approval? The purchaser of that lot's going to know?
Motion to open the public?
Of course.
Okay, we got a motion to open this to public?
Second.
We got a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Eileen, we're going to open this to public?
Meeting will now be open to the public.
If there's anyone in the public that would like to speak, please come forward. If not... Okay. Motion to close?
Motion to close.
Got a second?
Take one.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we're closed to public, Eileen. All right, so it comes down to, what's the pleasure of the board here? And, you know what, there's certainly a condition that they have to work with Charlie's office, and they're going to comply with the setbacks. They understand that the HOA will be the recipient and gatekeeper of these signs, right? Jen?
I agree.
So they need relief to have the signs and the number of signs. But they will now comply with the, well, they don't have a setback, that they're going to comply with the buffer and the site triangle.
Okay. So...
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve this with the stipulations of getting it out of the sight line and out of the buffer. With all that said, I make a motion to approve.
With those conditions?
With those conditions, sir.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We got a second, okay. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo.
Yes.
Mr. Cantor.
Yes.
Mr. Hughes.
Yes.
Mr. Mertens.
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe.
Yes.
Mr. Ryan.
Yes.
Ms. Scottson.
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah.
Yes.
Application is approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I think we polled too many people?
Yes.
Yes.
We polled eight?
Oh, sorry, Ms. Scottson can't vote.
Yeah, I can't.
Okay.
I was just answering because they called them.
Thank you very much, members of the board.
You got it, sir. Thank you.
Charlie.
Robert.
Okay, one more, right? Okay, up next, case number BA 23-15, Stanley Krilla. Use variance approval to construct in addition to an existing single-family dwelling and pool. Application of Stanley Krilla as applicant and owner seeking use variance approval to construct in addition, including a wraparound covered porch and attached garage to an existing single-family dwelling on the subject property, which is an existing non-conforming residential use in the commercial SED 1 zone. Oh. A swimming pool, fence, paver, walkways, and a new paved parking area are also proposed on premises known as Block 49, Lot 8.02, 285 Squankham Road. Expiration date, April 2, 2024.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, professionals and staff. Peter Locato of the law firm of Sonnenblick Maron, Locato of Freehold, on behalf of the applicant.
Welcome, Peter.
Thank you, sir. I have with me a handful of witnesses I'd like to present tonight. First would be Stanley Krilla, the owner and occupant of the residence and operator of the property. property. Uh, also with us is Albert Verosi, he's our project engineer. We also have our architect, uh, as needed, Earl Jackson, and our professional planner, Allison Coffin. If it pleases the board, I would ask, um, Mr. Krilla to step forward and be sworn in.
Can we just swear them all in at one time?
Absolutely.
So, all right, let's do it, okay.
Could you all stand up, each of you who I called out, and raise your right hand to be sworn in?
Do you swear the testimony you give will be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth to help you guys? So, they're all away from the mic, so if you could state your name, so we know who you are on the record, just join the party.
Allison Coffin, licensed professional planner.
Stanley Krilla, owner. Earl Jackson, licensed architect.
Albert Verosi, engineer.
Okay.
Your, the witnesses are sworn in.
All right, thank you, sir, so who's first up?
Uh, Mr. Krilla, Mr. Chairman.
The owner?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good evening, Stanley.
Hi.
You're the property owner, um, you've acquired it in July of twenty-fifteen?
Yes, that's correct.
And do you live there with your wife?
I do.
Okay. And it's about two-point-eight acres in size?
That's correct.
And, uh, when you bought the residence, did you need to rehabilitate it from water and mold damage in the life?
Yes, it was, uh, it was quite the mess, but yes.
Okay. And, um, as, um, as you look at your property, and you look to the right going north, who's your neighbor to the right?
Uh, Victorard Golf Carts, and then the firehouse, and then the, um, ice skating rink, and then Rod Zarelli, he's got a bunch of storage there. He's got a house in storage.
And if you look at your house and you go to the left or south, who are your neighbors there?
Uh, Gary Smith and GSS, it's a family trust, he's got a twelve-thousand square-foot building, and I believe he's got approval for forty thousand in the back, and then to the left of that is a small SED property, and to the left of that is a home, and then to the left of that, I don't remember, Larry who passed away has the house, and he has the, um, small engine repair shop.
And then just to complete the neighborhood, as you describe it, looking across the street, can you give us, uh, you know, moving from north to south?
Sure, you've got a, well, the state of New Jersey owns a bunch of property, and across the street from me is, uh, an individual with a four-thousand square-foot pole barn in the back for storage, and then to the right of that is a, um, it's a defunct gas station that Rod Zarelli's currently, uh, he bought it and he's, I guess, before you guys soon, and then to the right of that is, um, the Feed, uh, Mammoth Feed with a small house and a huge, uh, business on it.
Thank you, Stanley.
Just so you, that Rod Zarelli application is before the planning board?
Thank you. The house is currently about one-thousand-eight-hundred-sixty-eight square feet?
That's it, yes, sir.
And you're proposing in addition to that house?
I am.
And, uh, is that about eight-hundred-and-twenty, I'm sorry, eighteen-hundred-and-twenty square feet in round numbers?
It's eighteen-twenty, and that includes the wraparound porch and the garage, I think the internal is about another six-hundred square feet.
For the, uh, attached garage you're proposing?
No, the six-hundred square feet for living space.
Oh, for living space, I'm sorry, okay. And that, the overall additions, they include a new swimming pool and patio walkways?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, a generator pad, fencing?
Yes.
And, um, paving the existing gravel parking?
Yes.
That's in the front of the property?
Yes.
Okay. And, uh, right now you do not have a, uh, garage that's connected to the house, is that correct?
That's correct.
And, and so why do you want?
Uh, for two reasons, first, you know, when the wife goes shopping and it's pouring rain out, and, you know, instead of walking sixty feet and getting soaked, it's nice just to have a garage to make, this is built in the nineteen-forties, so we want a real house now, so we wanna attach garage, and it also will, also buffer us some from, uh, Victorard Golf Carts, it'll give us a little bit of privacy.
Okay. And, um, also on the property currently, you have a pole barn?
I do.
Okay. And, uh, that you pulled permits for in twenty-fifteen?
That's correct, uh, yes, Aug, I think August of fifteen, yeah, finished in December.
Okay, and, and to use in connection with your house?
That's correct, for my, um, car storage, my, my personal, uh, cars and boat and a camper.
And you would consider yourself a classic car collector?
Yes.
Okay. Now, over times, after you built that pole barn, uh, it became, uh, used not just for your own car collection?
That's, that's correct, uh, friends, uh, you know, when you have, when you're in the car community, you know, a lot of guys with cars, and the biggest problem that they have is they don't have storage, so everybody's like, oh, could you do this, could we do that, and it, it kind, it grew into a business.
And.
So, can I just ask, so it's my understanding that you're not using that pole barn at all for your own personal storage, you're using the detached garage for your personal storage?
Uh, no, the personal, the detached garage is a drop garage, um, some of my clients, um, can't drive on Saturdays, so on Sundays, I don't, I don't wanna work, so I will put a car in the garage if they wanna do a pickup, and I'll open it remotely with my phone and the camera, turn off the alarm, they pull their car out.
I'm not talking about the pole barn, I'm talking about where are your personal vehicles?
Outside.
So, what, what, so when you got this pole barn approved, it was for your personal use?
Yes, yes.
But you're no longer using that at all?
I have a few of my collector cars there now, but I don't use it like for a daily driver kind of thing.
That's not what I'm asking you.
Okay.
So, I think what Jen is asking is, you have collector cars?
Yes.
That you store in the pole barn?
Yes, I do.
So, how many cars from others are you storing in there?
About ninety.
How big is this bar, pole barn?
Ten thousand square feet.
So, explain how that's gonna work?
Could you be more specific?
How exactly are you storing ninety cars in ten thousand square feet?
Very tight.
That's not helpful at all.
Now, okay, Stanley, you have lifts in there?
Oh, yes, I do have a, I have, I'm sorry, I have eighteen lifts in there.
Thanks.
Sorry.
And your clients?
Yes.
They're collectors and they're part-time residents?
Oh, yes, I have, um, collectors, some guys, they buy cars and they use them like stocks, um, they think they're out of favor right now, and they'll hang on to them for a couple of years, and then when they go back into favor, they'll sell them at auction. That's probably about sixty-five percent of the, of the cars there, right now, of the ninety cars, probably sixty-five won't move in a year.
And when people wanna drop off a car, or pick up a car?
Yes.
Do they make an appointment with you? How does this work?
They have to make an appointment, nobody's allowed on the property other than, there's no signs or anything like that, it's, it's kind of just a phone call, hey, could I get my car, you know, give me a week's notice, and put it, I can either put it in the drop garage, or actually meet them face-to-face.
And your pole barn, is it, um, climate controlled?
Yes, it's heated, it's air-conditioned, it's dehumidified, it's got thirteen cameras, motion sensors, fire sensors, freeze sensors, um, I, it's got R-twenty-five blown on the walls, R-thirty-five blown on the ceilings, uh, insulated floor, um, so it was built for, for my, for my cars.
I, I imagine at this time of the year, there aren't many cars that are coming and going from your side?
No, um, from January through March, zero, uh, from, say, April, May, June, the, my, I have winter clients, so probably twenty-five of those cars will come out over those three months. During the summer, I may have one or two cars, maybe three cars, the guys are, are, like to show their cars, car shows, so they'll ask me, I'll, I'll bring it out for them, say on a Friday, they'll bring it back on a Monday, I'll put it back into storage, and they're done for the season, then they take it out a couple of times. And then in the fall, it starts again, where they start bringing it back, my winter guys, it'll come back October, November, December, but then there won't be any movement for the re, for January through March.
So, in the spring and the fall months, typically, on average, how many cars do you have coming and go?
Ten a month.
Ten a month.
Roughly, ten to twelve.
And you live in the residence with your wife?
Yes.
Okay, and it's your intention to continue to live there?
It is.
If you get your approval?
Yeah, and that's why we wanna build it up so nice.
Mr. Chairman, I would make, uh, Mr. Krilla available for questions as to his ownership and operation of the property.
Okay, Charlie?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, so, uh, we had a TRC meeting on us, so I'm just gonna ask some more questions and just get more context for the board, so the pole barn, right, so it's not all the same height, the entire length of it as you go into the property, right?
No, it's not, the first fifty feet are twenty-foot walls, and the next hundred-and-fifty feet are twelve.
Mr. Krilla, I'm sorry you interrupted, when you're talking, maybe you addressed the board?
Oh, I'm sorry.
He's asking the question.
Okay.
Since they're the deciders, right?
Okay, thank you for that. I appreciate it. The first fifty feet, uh, is twenty-foot walls, and the next hundred-and-fifty feet are twelve-foot walls, I was originally gonna put a mezzanine in, but I decided against it because of the, I ran out of money.
So, in that first fifty feet, that's where you have the lifts that you talk about, and those were like akin to what you'd see in the city, where you could park one on top of the other on the lift?
Actually, the back wall of the twelve-foot are where I have the, uh, the lifts, I have twelve across the back, and then on the far end, there's six.
So, the max?
So, it's like a L.
Maximum with what you have in there now is ninety cars you can store?
I could probably fit, if I really got tight and got lucky with some small cars, about a hundred and five.
And then, at the rear of that pole barn, there's, at least on aerial imagery, there's three trailers, can you talk about what those are used for?
Sure, one of them, um, has my, I have a, a diesel tractor that I cut the lawn with, and a, um, snowblower that are in the one. Uh, one is a friend's, it's a car trailer, it's clean, there's nothing in it, and the other one is my car trailer that I take my own cars to car shows with.
And those would be the ones that appear on the screen?
Yes, those three, the ones that are lined up nice.
And then when you say the drop garage, so immediately to the north of the pole barn, there's a detached garage, that's the drop garage you're talking about?
Yes.
Okay. And then you're adding a s, an attached garage to the?
Yes, to the house. That's correct.
And then there's a gravel parking lot along your existing driveway that you're paving, and then you're also installing some friends, friends in the, area?
Yes.
And that's four-foot high, it's fifty percent open and all that?
Yes, I, why don't I do that, so that it would match the fence by, for Victor, Victorard has some real nice, uh, looks like horse fencing, so I kinda wanted to keep the continuity between the two properties so that it would look nice, and his building mimics mine as far as looking like something from a horse farm.
So, and then the emergency generator you're proposing, that's going on the north side of the detached garage, the drop garage?
Uh, north. I think northeast.
Northeast corner?
Yes.
And that's a residential generator that's gonna comply with the township noise ordinance, you know, maximum sixty-five decibels at twenty-seven feet and all that?
Yes, it's a, it's a Generac, and it's made for home use.
Gotcha. And then just to give the board clarity, so why they originally filed an application to the board, this is in the SED-one zone, which only permits commercial uses, uh, they came in for use variance for additions to the single-family residence, so obviously residence is not permitted, so it's expansion of non-conforming use, we asked questions about the pole barn in the back, and that's what added another layer to the, to the use variance, um, cause, you know, I know they're trying to present this as self-storage, I think Jen, I'll let her opine.
That's a no.
Yeah, no, we, just so you know, we're, we're not classifying it.
No, but it also has multiple principal uses on a single lot, so.
So, and we, you know, I know we had a TRC, we had some discussions, you know, I'll leave it up to the board's discretion, but, you know, use variance is usually go in perpetuity with the property, when a site like this where it's, you know, the use in the back is tied to the residence and the owner and operator, you know, maybe having some kind of sunset clause in the approval or the deed that it's gotta be owner-operated in the back with the single-family residence, you know, once property changes hands and then it becomes a tenant property in the front, then, you know, someone living remotely, are they really doing, you know, oversight to make sure that it's operated in, you know, accordance with what the approval is, I think that would be something prudent for the board to, uh, consider. As far as, well, I'll, I have some more comments, but I'll let it get to the engineer, uh, says our engineer really.
All right, Jen?
So, a couple of questions, you said that the pole barn has climate control, did you pull permits to put?
Yes.
Heat in there? So, there's per, the?
There's permits for everything on that, on that property.
Um, what is the purpose of the parking lot? I mean, most single-family homes don't have a parking lot in their front yard.
Because we don't have an attached garage and it's?
But you will.
Right, well, that's.
So, uh, my question is, usually parking lots and even those, those structures that don't have an attached garage don't have a parking lot, they have a driveway, so it makes me feel like this commercial operation is more significant than you're representing, so I don't understand the purpose of the parking lot for a single-family home if the back building is being used as sparsely as you're representing.
When you have neighbor, when you have friends come over?
Yes, usually they park in the parking lot, in the, in the, in the driveway.
Right, so it's kind of the driveway in the front to come to the front?
Well, how far back is your house?
Oh, I don't know.
It's not close to the road?
Hundred-and-fifty feet?
It's a hundred-and-fifty feet off the road.
Roughly.
That's a significant amount of area in your driveway? For guests to come.
The driveway that is in the front, I think is ten feet wide, maybe twelve?
So, I'm, I'm representing, that's pavement, that's unnecessary, and it lends me to think that the commercial operation, and let's be honest here, you transformed this pole barn into a commercial operation and didn't tell the town about it, you didn't come and ask permission, you just did it, so I'm skeptical by nature because, you know, and when you made the, the notice for this yourself, you didn't even mention the back building, it wasn't until we figured out what was, that, there's a question about it, that you're back here with the right notice, so I'm skeptical that that parking area is being used for residential purposes, I think it's being used for your commercial operation, which makes me think that it's more of an intense operation than you're letting on, if you don't need it for your commercial operation, I would recommend to the board that it go away. So, that's my recommendation.
So, we're speaking of?
The two front, the cars.
Where there's a, it looks like a white car and maybe a dark green car, that's?
It's my, it's my wife's car and my car.
Okay, so that's currently?
Right.
Uh, gravel?
Yes.
And you were proposing to make it pavement?
Yes.
Yep.
And, and Jen is suggesting that, given the other improvements on the site existing and proposed? That that's not really necessary?
I mean, the driveway currently?
It could go off.
Has a turnaround existing, so it's not like you need that to turn around and come out head out, you don't, so I don't think that that area is necessary unless you're using it for your commercial operation.
I could take it out.
That would be my recommendation.
Charlie, how are we looking on impervious coverage?
Oh. So, they are adding impervious coverage, obviously with the additions to the house, so, you know, eliminating that parking is gonna help with the calculation, I had a comment for their engineer regarding, you know, putting in dry wells for any increase in impervious coverage for the residential additions, so, uh, you know, reducing more impervious is certainly gonna help, uh, that calculation and?
Got it.
Run off the neighborhood properties.
I think it's important for the board to note that they're in an SED zone, right? So, this is a residential operation with this vehicle storage in the back, so in the SED zone, the coverage is a higher number because we're anticipating a commercial operation, so, which would be seventy percent, they're way below that, however, the residential in the ARE-two, which this site would conform with, the coverage is fifteen percent and they're at twenty-eight percent, so removing some pavement would make it more in keeping So removing some pavement would make it more in keeping with our goals for the residential development in town as opposed to an SED operation.
Okay. My client is indicating he would, uh, agree to with that condition of eliminating that front parking spaces. Since our TRC, which you'll hear from our engineer, he also instructed his engineer to design, um, additional dry wells and rain gardens to offset the additional impervious coverage that's proposed by the additions.
John, do we have any violations?
We were unaware, so, uh, we do not. But I have a question, a couple of questions for Jen, maybe she could enlighten me. So, it's nonconforming because it's a residential use in a commercial zone, correct? So, he's now proposing an expansion on that residential use?
Yep.
Uh, but the commercial portion of the property which was never approved, correct?
So, when this pole barn got permitted, was permitted, it was for his personal use, as his personal garage?
Correct. So now this has evolved to a business which would require site plan? And now you have two uses on?
Which is a D-one variance. They did renotice for the D-one variance for that, yes.
So, to John's point, if this had come in as a commercial use and application back in twenty-fifteen, you know, this context of what this application and how it was looked at by the township may have been different, you know. They did get permits and approvals from the township at the time, but it was under the guise of a separate use. I mean, being perfectly frank, it was an existing residence which was nonconforming at the time for an expansion for a pole barn. It probably should've came to the board at that time too, but we're here anyway now, so, uh, you know. Anything they can do to ameliorate stormwater concerns, reduce impervious coverage, I think would be a positive for this application.
Thank you, Charlie. Board members, from Mr. Krilla? Go ahead, Mr. Cantor. But, uh, I guess to the board, the, the house is an older house, so it's been there. It was zoned SED probably much after the house was put there. He's, he's stuck with a house on Lakewood Farmingdale Road. Not stuck with, but he has a property that has a house on Lakewood Farmingdale Road, mixed in with a bunch of commercial properties.
And now he's looking to expand it, which is one of the variances that he's asking you to consider.
Gotcha. But it's, it's a unique because it's a residential?
I mean, the bottom line is if he didn't modify the pole barn in the back from what he originally got it approved from and stayed in the house as is, he would not be here.
Gotcha. Okay. All right. We're good? You have any questions? All right. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to, so what Charlie said is very important to me. When the owner ever does sell this property, it will void out anything future. Because, I mean, this situation's not a big deal to me, but I can just see, if he did get an approval and down the road he sells the property, would that be stipulated in the selling or?
I mean, I think it's a legal question for Annie, but I mean, I think if the board so desires, you can make it a deed restriction that it sunsets if ownership changes, Annie, right?
Or if it's not owner-occupied and run, would be another way to look at it.
Yeah, we, we could certainly stipulate to being amenable to a deed condition. But first, as long as it's owner-occupied, perhaps he has a son who wants to take over the house when he's old and, and run the business.
I, I don't know if I agree with that. This, it, this variance is being sought based upon very specific facts having to do with the circumstances as they are currently. It's not like there's two independent operators and what have you. If his son wants to continue to operate it, he can come back and get the board to affirm any decision that is made. But I would recommend that this allow, if the board is acting the affirmative, that it be tied to this particular owner and based upon the testimony that's provided on how it operates today. You know, I can't guarantee you what my son's gonna do, let alone like, so I think, I, I, I agree with Mr. Mertens. I don't really have an issue with it, but I, we need to be very specific in how we evaluate this so that it doesn't become problematic moving forward.
Question real quick, does, how does that conflict with passing of property through like a state law or something?
Well, you'd have to do a change in the deed, right? I mean, you, you, it would have to be a quick claim deed or whatever. If there's any change in ownership, at least it's in our, in our documentation. We may not be able to catch every single thing that happens within the township. However, if it becomes a problem, at least we have the documentation to say, this is not what we envisioned, and then they're gonna have to come back to the board at that point. But, you know, it's, it's no different than anywhere else in town. You know, most of our code issues, and John, you could correct me, are complaint-driven, correct? We don't have the resources to police everybody. But if it's in the documentation, at least if it becomes a problem at some point in the future, we have the information to, to figure out what to do with it.
Plus, it also gives code enforcement the ability to, to take some kind of enforcement action without something being stipulated, like hours of operation, number of employees, all those types of items that we regularly put into these resolutions. Without it being there, we don't have a leg to stand on for enforcement.
We certainly wouldn't object to recording, assuming the board were to approve this with conditions, we would certainly stipulate to recording that resolution, uh, in the chain of titles so that the scope of the approval, uh, as well as any restrictions, you know, are recorded. I, I, I just wanted to, you know, give them that.
You're, in the typical use variance resolution, it requires recording.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So, you know.
Okay.
You know, and again, whether the condition were that the variance would sunset when Mr. Krilla no longer owned the property, or alternatively, and I understand Jen doesn't support it, you know, as long as, you know, it, it had to be owner-occupied. If that were to change, then obviously, then, then it would expire. I mean, obviously, it's at the board's pleasure to impose the conditions and things best.
I think Jen made it clear that someone after Mr. Krilla will have to reaffirm, you know, the conditions there. Right?
Mr. Chair, I just wanna ask one more question. With the vehicles coming to and from the sites, some of them are driven by, you know, the owners of the car, per car, right? Some of them may come on like a flatbed? Does any come by like a car hauler?
Twice in a couple of years. There's plenty of room to turn around, but that doesn't normally happen.
Very infrequently, we're not gonna be having car haulers?
No, it happened, uh?
On the side of the county road or anything like?
The last time it happened was probably four years ago. Three, four years ago.
And in those type of instances, what are the occurrences? Is it for like a particular show, uh?
It would be where somebody bought a car, as I was saying, where they bought it, they thought it was a good buy. They bought it, and it's on a, it's on a car hauler, and they pull in, take the car off.
Gotcha.
Turn around, go back out.
So they're bringing an individual car off that hauler, not like a mass import-export of vehicles?
Just one.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And they use that existing driveway that you have that goes along the north side of your property?
That's correct.
It's a business of trading. Yeah. Okay. Mr. Lacanna?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My next witness would be our, uh, project engineer.
Let's have the engineer come up, please. You could ask, yeah, John, go ahead.
John, um, since this is, so you don't currently inspect that pole barn?
Correct.
But will you start now, since now we know?
Uh, so, if, if the approval goes through and it's legitimized as a business, uh, the fire bureau actually does a yearly fire inspection. They're the ones who, uh, in fact, we've gotten some good information or, because they're the, they cover the entire town with regards to commercial properties. So, with those inspections, if there's anything out of sorts, uh?
So any fire code for, I mean, that's quite a load, fire load in there.
Yep, uh, but they also notify us of, uh, some code violations as well. So, uh, they're, they're, they're aware of the approvals, how a site's supposed to be run. Um, and usually they'll come back to us and inform us, say, listen, you know, this property owner, you know, has now expanded, or we're seeing, you know, modifications that we don't see permits for, and that's when code enforcement gets involved. So they're the ones who do it on a yearly basis, keep us informed for the sites that we don't access on a yearly. We have no business going in there. Like Jen said, we're usually complaint-driven, uh, unless something's so obvious that, uh, we notice it as we're canvassing, uh, different neighborhoods.
But now it'll be on a regular routine?
Correct. It'll be on a yearly.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Lacanna, can we have the engineer put his credentials on the record, please?
Your education and professional qualifications, please.
I've been a licensed engineer since September of ninety. Uh, I got my experience under Donald W. Smith in the nineteen eighties designing a lot of site plan work. Did a job up here in, um, off Sunnyside Road. It was called Eastport Meadows. I think that was subsequently sold to LNR. I think they call it Centennial Village off of Sunnyside Road.
So you're, are you a licensed professional engineer in the state of New Jersey?
Yes, since nineteen ninety.
Since nineteen ninety. And you're self?
What's that?
You're self-educated?
Yes.
Where did you go to college?
University of New Mexico.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Have you been qualified by a professional board in the state of New Jersey to test as a?
Many.
Okay. Mr. Lacanna?
Thank you. Albert, as it relates to the pole barn?
Yes.
Could you discuss for the board, um, specifically as to that, as well as the other improvements? What stormwater management techniques and improvements are proposed as part of this application?
We're adding downspout recharge units to directly recharge, store and recharge water for the addition area to the house. Uh, there's a system of existing systems, but I wasn't asked to discuss that. I've sized that for a New Jersey DEP water quality storm in total storage without any, uh, relief from the recharge that would occur. So the pure water quality storm is stored, uh, for recharge.
And that would be for the additional improvements proposed as part of this application?
That's correct, the house. The house and garage.
And, uh, after the TRC was recently had remotely, uh, did it come to your attention that there were also downspouts for the pole barn?
Yes, there's a series of downspouts. It was on a supplemental map I prepared and sent to Mr. Conley.
Very recently.
Yes.
Yes.
That shows the locations of all the downspouts. At each of those, it was represented to me that there are six-foot deep, three-foot diameter, uh, recharge pits that the downspouts are directed to, to recharge that water.
Mr. Chair, if I could just interject and maybe speed this along. Uh, so, you, applicant would agree as a condition approval for any net impervious additions to the single-family dwelling, you're gonna provide dry wells for the water quality storm. You'll submit to my office as a condition approval review and, and everything like that. That's not an issue?
Yes.
Okay.
That is correct.
All right. Uh, uh, if it's over five thousand square feet, you're gonna have to get Free Old Soil Conservation District approval. Uh, Monmouth County Board of Health, that's an existing septic system that's been there. You know, I think they issued a memo, as long as there's no increase in bedrooms above four and there's no grinder pumps or anything like that, um, they have no issue. Uh, I also want to note in my letter, I had a, I had cited them for a setback, or sorry, variances for the fence, uh, for the setback and the makeup. I just confirmed with John, that's in type ball in my letter. The fence is gonna be no more than four foot in height and fifty percent open, correct?
Yes.
And you can provide the detail just to clarify that?
Yeah, we, we're gonna need the detail.
Yeah, so as long as it's less than four feet in height, fifty percent open, it can be within the front yard setback. Um, once you get above that, then there's other restrictions that kick in, right? With the height and solid and everything like that. Um, really, that's all I have from an engineering perspective. I think the biggest part of this was clarifying the use and the multiple uses and how those operate and function together from an engineering perspective. You know, I think the dry wells will help add its stormwater concerns. And we can hear if there's public, if there's any neighboring properties that are concerned. You got a commercial property to the north and a commercial operation to the south, you know?
Understood, Charlie.
I don't think we're gonna hear much.
The only, the only thing I have is, you're requesting a waiver for constructing sidewalk, correct?
Yes.
Are there other sidewalks on five forty-seven? Nope. Okay. All right.
Albert, is it your understanding that the pole barn has a direct, uh, department fire alarm tie-in?
What's that, sir?
Is it your understanding that the pole barn has a direct fire department alarm tie-in, current?
I'm not knowledgeable of that fact.
I'll get Mr. Krilla to confirm that for us, but we'll stipulate that it does.
Good. Charlie? Should this be approved, is there any dedication easement that needs to be provided in the event the township or the county wants to widen and put sidewalk in?
It's a county roadway, so it would be under their jurisdiction. Um, so.
Got it. All right. Board members, anyone have any questions for the engineer? No.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman? Thank you, Albert. Um, unless there are any questions for the architect, I, I wouldn't necessarily call him up because he would only speak to aesthetic considerations. I would go right to my planner, Allison Coffin.
I don't think it's necessary, but if the board wants to hear it, I mean, he's here, but I don't necessarily think, there, I have no concerns with the architecture, so I would submit that, um, you know, they've complied the best they can and, and, uh, I don't have any, they don't need relief for architecture.
Okay.
Thank you.
I agree.
That's fine.
Allison? Would you, uh, state your professional qualifications for the record?
Sure. Hi. Allison Coffin, Licensed Professional Planner in the state of New Jersey, certified by the American Institute of Certified Planners, uh, continuing since, oh, two thousand and five. I've been accepted in front of boards in a lot of communities throughout the state, and I've appeared here in Howell.
We'll accept your credentials, Allison.
Thank you.
Allison, could you tell the board what you reviewed to prepare your testimony and, uh, the observations you've drawn?
Sure. I looked at the application materials. I visited the site. I interviewed the applicant. Uh, looked at the professionals' reports. I attended the TRC, and I've heard all of the previous testimony here tonight.
And, um, what conclusions or observations have you made?
Sure. The property that we're looking at is a two-point-seven-seven acre, a regularly shaped lot. It's got three-hundred-and-twenty-four feet of frontage on Squonkum Road, and it contains a single-family dwelling, a detached garage, and a ten-thousand-square-foot pole barn that contains a vehicle storage use. The applicant proposes to renovate and expand the residence, to expand the second floor. Uh, it includes an attached garage, a covered wraparound porch, and an in-ground pool with patio. The finished home will have three bedrooms. The current home has three bedrooms. The applicant also requests the board's approval to maintain the vehicle self-storage use in the pole barn, which is a second principal use on the site, and exists at present without benefit of review and approval of this board. The character, the surrounding uses of the area includes a mix of residential, a golf car dealership, the ice arena, fire station, and Monmouth Feed Supply. Uh, the zoning ordinance has this site in the SED one zone. It's a special economic district. The purpose of the zone is to provide for a variety of economic development opportunities in areas of the township where rail and highway infrastructure are readily available. The house is not a permitted use, so the expansion requires a D-two variance to expand a pre-existing nonconforming use. A D-one variance is required for the automobile storage use, which is, in my opinion, appropriate for the zone, but not a permitted use. And a D-one variance is also required for the presence of two buildings on one lot, and there is no bulk variance relief requested with this application. It's my opinion that special reasons exist for the granting of the requested use variances, and that the site is particularly suited to the proposed uses, and there is no significant detriment to the zone plan or the surrounding properties that would result from the granting of the variances. Looking first at the D-two variance to expand the pre-existing nonconforming residential use, the New Jersey Supreme Court in the Burb Ridge versus the governing body of Mine Hill Township decision examined the criteria to be considered by the boards when you're looking at the D-two variance. The court determined that when the special reasons concept is applied to the expansion of an existing nonconforming use, things such as the appearance, the aesthetics, and the compatibility of the use with the surrounding neighborhood become uniquely significant, especially if there's no evidence that the use will be discontinued. In this instance, the site contains a pre-existing nonconforming dwelling. There's no evidence that the occupancy of this dwelling is going to be discontinued. And in this instance, the expansion is accompanied by a significant aesthetic improvement. The new home is considerably more attractive structure and enhances the visual character of the site as seen from the road. Then looking at the D-two variance, uh, the special reasons, uh, D-one variance. Special reasons exist for the granting of the D-one variances for the automobile storage use and the presence of two principal buildings or uses on the site. The site contains a large pole barn to the rear which can easily accommodate the automobile storage use. Uh, the use is appropriate for the zone. Its functions, while it's not a self-storage use, it does function in some ways similar to a permitted use. The customer pays a rental fee to have their private property stored in the building in a safe and secure manner. However, it differs from the permitted self-storage use in that customers can only access their vehicles by appointment, whereas self-storage usually has twenty-four-hour access by way of like a key card system. So, the vehicles here are placed into the building by the business operator, not the customer. So the activity on this property is far less than a permitted use would be. The use is therefore extremely low in intensity. There's minimal traffic as vehicles are accessed by the owners infrequently, with some being stored for months at a time, if not years at a time, and all accesses by appointment only and is therefore limited, uh, much more limited than permitted uses in the zone. There's no employees on the site other than the owner. There's no maintenance or automotive repair work done on the site. There's no gasoline sold on the site, and there's no outdoor storage of rented, rental space for outdoor storage of vehicles on the site. It's my opinion that the, the variances can be granted without detriment. There's no detriment to the expansion of the home. It fits within the required setbacks and requires no relief, uh, for coverage or height. It does not generate significant traffic, odors, noise, and is consistent with the character of the area, which contains residences, and there's no detriment to allowing the long-term storage of cars in the pole barn. This is a, is as similar to permitted uses. It's low in intensity, and it does not conflict with the residential use that exists on the front of the property. The proposed variances will not substantially impair the intent and purpose of your master plan and zoning ordinance. The residential use is a, an existing nonconforming use. The proposed expansion offers an aesthetic improvement which will enhance the area. Uh, as this is not a new nonconforming use, uh, this will not have a significant detriment to the impact of the zone plan, and the proposed long-term car storage is similar to the character of the permitted uses in the SED one zone, and it's therefore somewhat consistent with the zoning, in my opinion. So, for those reasons, it's my opinion that the board would, if you saw fit, have the justifications for granting the use variances as they are requested. They would result in no detrimental impact to the surrounding area, to the neighborhood, and it would not represent a significant detrimental, uh, imposition to your master plan and development ordinance.
Thank you, Allison. Jen?
I, I don't? I don't have any issue with the testimony. I do think that something that Allison stated is something that Andy, you might want to just put in the resolution, is that there's no outdoor storage of vehicles. I would anticipate that that was going to be the case, given the nature of the use. But to put it in the resolution, I think, is important. I agree with what Ms. Coffin testified to. I don't have an issue with the multiple principal uses. I think, given the uniqueness of the owner occupancy and the things that we've discussed previously, the low intensity of the use, the house has been there, as Mr. Cantor has said. They're putting a modest addition on to make it more functional. There's no relief associated with whatever they're proposing. So I take no exception to the relief that they've requested as part of this application.
Thank you, Jen. Board members, do you have any questions?
It occurred to me, and I don't know if it's for the planner, but I guess it was for the owner?
Go ahead. Ask the question.
Is there any work done on the cars on the property or any storage of gas or oil?
She said no. She said no.
Okay.
Yeah, we stipulate to that. That is correct. There is no work done.
I'm sorry. I must have missed that. Thank you.
But my question, piggybacking, and I was thinking the exact same thing, is what protections are there if, God forbid, there's an issue with a gas leak and oil leak or something to that effect inside the covered, inside the pole barn?
Well, it'll go in the resolution that there's no maintenance of vehicles. There's no storage of gasoline. There's no...
No, but I'm saying if a car is actually leaking such materials.
I mean, I don't know how that's any different than a car leaking in your garage.
Yeah, but there's 90 cars in there.
I get it. So...
Is there concrete on the floor?
Yes.
Yes, there's a concrete floor. There's video surveillance both inside and outside the building. And as we stipulated, there is also a fire alarm tie-in to the department.
And the board has in the past put a condition that they have to have spill kits, you know, in the garage.
Spill kits, drip pans, all that, yes.
So and then I just add, you know, you heard the testimony from the owner talk about there's three trailers. I would just, it's not shown on their site plan, but should the board not take issue with that, I'd say maybe a maximum of three trailers, 25-foot maximum length.
We stipulate to that condition, certainly.
Okay. All right. Board members, any more questions? Go ahead.
Is there currently a fire suppression system in the pole barn?
I don't believe there is. Yeah.
Just a direct notification through alarm to fire?
That's correct.
I do have a question, Mr. Licata, and I'm assuming the answer's no, but I don't know this. Are there any electric vehicles stored in this pole barn?
I don't like them.
I'm just asking because I would... Would you be okay if we put a condition that no electric cars be stored in the pole barn?
Absolutely fine with that.
And the reason I bring that up is that they burn much hotter than regular car fires, and it would take a lot, especially if there's no fire suppression. It could become problematic.
Certainly stipulate to that condition as well.
Andy, you recording?
And no charging system, and no chargers, right? And no chargers, is that okay too?
Every car's got a battery charger.
No, I meant like no electronic chargers. I think that that might be something that will help the fire situation.
Certainly. Thank you.
Go ahead, Mr. Mertens.
Make a motion, open the public. Second.
All right, we got a motion, open public. We got a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Eileen?
The board is now open to the public. If you'd like to make a comment, please come up to the microphone, state your name and address.
Does anybody want to speak on? Okay. Not seeing anyone?
Motion to close, sir.
We got a motion to close? Do we get a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. All right, Eileen, we're closed to public.
Board is now closed to the public.
All right, Mr. Licata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We appreciate your time. Obviously, we will submit directly upon what we provided, as well as the summary provided by your planner. We thank you for your time and consideration and ask for a positive resolution with the conditions so stipulated and mentioned during the testimony.
Can I just ask one question? I know that there was testimony that there's 90 cars there, could go up to 105. Are we capping it at 105?
Yes.
Just so that John has a number in the event that there's an issue.
But what happens if you go and he goes 100% beetle bugs?
He can't have more than 105. And quite honestly, unless there's a complaint, we would have no reason to go there. But if there's a problem, at least we have a number.
You got a thing for Mini Coopers.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
And MG midgets. Can we have 200 MG?
All right.
We would stipulate to a maximum.
105, you got it. Okay. It's the pleasure of the board.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, based on the finding of facts, big stipulation I agree with Jennifer was we need to eliminate that parking area in the front. I think with the extra garage that you're putting on, I don't think we need that. And also, what was the other thing I wanted to... And with the stipulation, if the property is sold, that deed, that will be in the deed as far as somebody else taking over the property, that would have to come back here. So and I think it's a great, you know, works well on the site, and I like the plans and everything. So my motion's to approve.
Okay, we got a motion to approve. Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Mr. Cantor seconds it. Eileen, roll call, please.
Mr. Barillo?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Hughes?
Yes.
Mr. Mertens?
Yes.
Mr. Roscoe?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
And Chairman Sayah?
Mr. Licata, Monmouth County Board of Approval and all the other items that come along with it and working with our professionals, please.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Application is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
All right, Eileen, when's the next meeting?
February 26.
26, is that I hear you saying?
Yes.
Okay, February 26.
February 26.
All right.
Same channel.
Thank you, guys.
Same channel. All right, so... Andy will make sure it's right. But the bottom line up front is if you put a deed restriction in there, a nature in it, and the approval is based and modifies the deed, then it becomes a condition that, you know, the son would only be able to inherit it and do what he needs to do with it. I don't think we're going there. I think what's happening is someone takes over, no matter who it is, man, woman, I don't... Anyone. They have to come back here for reaffirmation. Yes, that's all. Yes, saying that I own it, I want to continue to run it in this manner.
I don't.
Or I don't. Right. All right.
Do we need a motion to close?
We need a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
We got a motion. Do we have a second? Okay, we got a motion and a second. All in favor? All right. All right, this meeting is adjourned.
Good luck tomorrow.